The Paramount City Council is now called to order. May I have roll call of council members, please?
Councilmember Gillian. Councilmember Hoffmeyer.
Here.
Councilmember Lemmons.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hanson.
Here.
Mayor Martinez.
Here.
Make a most big excuse, Lori, from this meeting.
Second. Okay, at this time, I'd like my colleagues to join me.
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson.
Yes.
Mayor Martinez.
Yes. At this time, I'd like my colleagues to join me at the podium. Tonight, we are recognizing some fantastic members of our community. Would Noah Endo and Susannah Munoz please join us? And Senior Field Deputy Kim Takachiki Chin from Congresswoman Lucille Royball Allard's office. Susannah is not present yet? Each year, our Congresswoman Lucille Royball Allard holds her annual art competition for students throughout the congressional district. This year, there were 139 entries judged on originality, technical skill, artistic presentation, and use of color and contrast. I'm proud to say that two of the three top awards in 2018 went to Paramount High School students. Their winning artwork will be shown on the screen. Congratulations to first-place winner Noah Endo. A senior. For his piece entitled "A Growing Threat," created with colored pencil, marker, and pen. And congratulations to Susannah Munoz, also a senior, the third-place winner for her colored pencil piece entitled "Mother Nature." All the winners receive scholarships and monies for art supplies. Susannah's work will be displayed in Congresswoman Royball Allard's district office. As the first-place winner, Noah will receive a trip to Washington, D.C. for the national exhibit opening. His work will be displayed in the United States Capitol for one year. In addition, 1,000 posters with Noah's artwork will be distributed to schools and organizations throughout the 40th district to inspire other young artists to participate in next year's competition. Would each of you like to say a few words, Noah? Okay, that's all right. We're very, very proud of you, and congratulations. Okay, we'll take a photo with the city council. Kimberly.
Your mom should come up. Good evening, everyone. I am Kim Takachiki Chin from Congresswoman Royball Allard's office. We brought some of the posters here, so you can see Noah's work up close. And again, 1,000 posters were printed. And, you know, if you've ever been to Washington, D.C., it's going to be hanging on the long wall between the members' offices and then our nation's capital. So literally, thousands of people every day will be walking by and looking at Noah's artwork. And, you know, I know Noah's, you know, he's very modest, but, you know, I think this took you, what, six months? Six months to do. And clearly, you know, the judges recognized the amount of work that went into this, and we were just all very impressed, even from his second-place piece that he did last year. So if, you know, please take a poster and try to look at it up close, so you can see the amount of detail that really went into this. And just so you know that the people on our judging panel, some of them are actual artists who, you know, who are working artists, and they recognize this. So, and then actually, Noah's going to be going to Washington, D.C. next week. So, yes. So congratulations. Noah, congratulations to you and your mom, and I hope you guys have a great time when you're there.
Endo, please join us for a photo. Would you like to join us? Not really? Okay. And we also are honored to have the superintendent of our school district, Dr. Ruth Perez. So, Dr. Perez, we'd like you to join us as well for a photo. He's one of your students. Okay. You want to... Would Adrienne Londa, Field Representative for Assemblyman Anthony Rendon, please join us for this next presentation? Assemblyman Rendon's office has some certificates of recognition, the next group of students. Now would Maximilian Chao, Gabriela Maldonaz, Tanya Mungia, Jaleen Prom, Giselle Rios, Larissa Robles, and Eileen Tanimoto please join us? Mrs. Mrs. Tanimoto is the Advisor of the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America Club at Paramount High, and these students are some of the club members. They have been doing amazing projects and representing our town with great success in competitions at the regional and state levels. The Paramount Club has done remarkably well, qualifying for the state level every year since 1982. That's awesome. Four of our students tonight placed first or second in statewide competition against all sorts of larger and varied school districts. All of them will go to the Nationals, where we know they will be hard to beat. And every time they have gone to the Nationals, they have always come home with either a gold or silver medal. This year, Nationals are in Atlanta. All 50 states and Puerto Rico will be there with thousands of competitors participating in 40 different events. Here are some details about our FCC LA members this year. Senior Gabriela Maldonaz came in third at state and will be a team alternate in culinary display. Senior Tanya Mungia came in third in state in illustrated talk, which is a speech competition. Senior Jaleen Prom placed second in regionals, then came in first at state in teach and train for the lesson plans she created for special needs preschool students at Wertz Elementary School. Senior Larissa Robles placed second in state as part of the environmental ambassadors. She spoke on water management and the consequences of wasting water. Junior Maximilian Chao and Giselle Rios created a website that was one of only 10 in the United States that was invited to present nationally. During the national competition, kids from all 50 states trade pins from their local area with each other. So not only are we wishing them well tonight, we are also giving them 300 city pins to trade with their fellow students. We are very, very proud of all of you.
Let's come up here for a photo. And the mayor has your pins?
Who wants to carry the 300 pins? Thank you so much. You're welcome. I love your painting. I love the bright background. Very nice.
You're right there with your students. See you, Fred. All set? Okay. Countdown to zero. Three, two, one. Zero. Three, two, one.
At this time, I'd like to ask Dr. Perez if he could forward.
Three, two, one. Three, two, one.
And now, I'd like you to meet some exceptional students from Paramount High School. As I'm sure everyone remembers, a few months ago, there was a terrible crash on Downey Avenue, adjacent to the high school campus, in which four students were badly hurt. It was an awful and frightening scene, and yet it brought out the best in four students who automatically stepped in to help and comfort those that were injured until police and paramedics arrived. Would Anthony Furias, Juan Garza, Fernando Melgar, and Gabriel Orosco please join us? These four students represent not only the best of Paramount, but the best of the human spirit. Their actions speak of compassion, kindness, and, yes, heroism that is a joy behold. Tonight, in addition to giving them certificates of recognition, we give them our respect and gratitude. Thank you so much. Would Adrienne Londa please join us again for this next presentation, recognizing an amazing person in our community? Would Dr. Max Martinez please join us? Dr. Max, as everybody knows him, has been a longtime fixture and contributor to the Paramount community. He was born here, went to high school here, and has run his dental office here for many years. He has been involved with the Chamber of Commerce, the Paramount Education Partnership, the Elks Club, and much more. He has also been very involved with his alma mater, Long Beach State. Thanks to his distinction in his field and his service for our community, Dr. Max was honored as a 2018 distinguished alumni by Long Beach State Alumni Association, the group's highest honor. Tonight, we recognize him with affection for this wonderful achievement. Congratulations, brother.
I want to thank everybody. This has been quite an honor. It's been, wow, a roller coaster ride. I just, you will not believe how much that this has meant to me. Here, this is a first for Paramount, which is great. You know, a Paramount boy. You would have betted on this kid when he first started school here in Paramount. Your odds were against you. So, you know, this has been a great honor. But, you know, you have to thank Paramount for allowing me to come back after growing up here and allowing me to participate in some of the things that happen in Paramount that make Paramount just a little bit better. And so, no, I thank all of you. The honor goes to, really goes to the city of Paramount for letting me to do all those things that I've done, and to the two women in my life that's sitting over there, my wife and my mom. So, they're the reason why I'm up here. So, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Max. We are so proud of you, and we love you. Hi, Mom. Hi, wifey. Okay, moving on. Jean Daniels, please come forward. Now, I'd like to bring up another good friend to us all, Jean Daniels. Jean, of course, has been a devoted member of the Paramount community for decades. His latest service has been on the planning commission. Now, he's moving out of town to live with family members, and we want to thank him for his good work and wish him well in his next phase of his life. We will miss him, but always keep him in our hearts with fondness and gratitude for being a great public servant and wonderful friend. Thank you, Jean, for all your public service to our community, and you'll always be part of our Paramount family.
Well, thank you for this recognition, and it took us 38 years to get Paramount where it is today. And it didn't come on account of me or the council. It came because we joined in as a team with the council, the school board, the business community, the faith group, and most importantly, the residents. We all joined together as a team to get it where it is today. And as you look around, you can see how far it's come. Unfortunately, I don't know if I should say this now, unfortunately, two years ago, a dark cloud came over Paramount. A group of people come forward, disrespected the council, disrespected the leaders, called them names, called them liars, called them baby killers, and stuff like that. And I just have to mention that, because I don't want that to go unnoticed, because that's not the city of Paramount. That's brought forward by people who are hungry for power and such as that. Unfortunately, 60 years ago, Paramount came forward, never had a problem. And after 60 years, the city had to come up with a decorum to tell adult people how to act in public. So unfortunately, that was part of my growing. But believe me, don't matter how much this group says against the city, and they will never prevail. The city is too strong and too many backers. So anyway, I just want to thank everyone for this recognition. And believe me, it was a long ride. Twenty, I was 20 years on the council, and we accomplished a lot. When I said "we," we all did, the community, everyone else involved. And I will always have a place in my heart for Paramount. Okay.
Our Paramount Library is getting a new librarian. Her name is Ms. Andrea Crowe. Andrea, will you please join us? Andrea has 16 years of library experience. She started her career with LA County Library in 2001, when she became a library page at the Lakewood Library. Since then, she has moved through the ranks, becoming a librarian in 2012 at South Whittier Library, where she worked with children and teens. She is coming to us now from the Norwalk Library, where she spent three years developing programs for adults, which included a monthly art event and smartphone and tablet help. She is very excited to serve the community of Paramount. And I was honored this afternoon, along with Councilmember Lemmons, to have lunch with Andrea, and so she has a lot of fun activities planned for the children in this community. And I've also shared with her that I will, once a month, as mayor, come and read to the children of our community. And we talked about the education of reading. It builds children's fluency, comprehension, reading skills. And so, she's on board in supporting the children and the adults in our community. So Andrea, would you like to say a few words to our community? Thank you.
Mayor Martinez, councilmembers, and the city of Paramount, I am delighted to be working at Paramount Library. I have worked in many cities, but none whose reputation has been as friendly and as supportive of libraries as yours. I look forward to working with you all. Please visit me at Paramount Library and participate in our summer reading program. This Saturday, we have a special children's program planned at 2:00 p.m. featuring Arti Loon. And then this Tuesday, on June 26th, at 5:00 p.m., we have a Bento Box demonstration for adults. I hope to see you all there. Thank you very much.
Okay, those are our presentations for this evening. Thank you very much for joining us, and we'll take a short recess break. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we will have city council public comment updates. Mr. Moreno?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. At the June 5th city council meeting, we had two public comment speakers cards. The first one was from Mr. Arti, and he was concerned that the city does not have a game plan, and also questioned the city's economic development efforts. As a result, the staff met with Mr. Arti, and we briefed him on the city's history, including the use and then eventual loss of redevelopment and the challenges that go along with that. Additionally, we outlined for Mr. Arti the city's economic efforts and our plans. Next, at the June 5th meeting, we had Ms. Sarah Patricia Wessel come and discuss about the city council agenda not posted on the city website, issues with the city's telephone system, and a reference to the Brown Act. As a result, staff explained to Ms. Wessel that the agenda was in...
to address the council about general comments. Ms. Decay?
Good evening.
Good evening.
No, my name is Sandra Decay, and I'm a longtime resident of the City of Paramount. I'm here today to, to speak in favor of the Paramount recall. After many years of service in this, it is time for new blood on the city council. For Paramount to move into the future, we need younger people with new ideas to lead us forward. Most cities have put into place a term limits to encourage growth and to discourage complacency. Old minds get set in one way of thinking, but for our city to find its way into the future, we need fresh thoughts and new ways of thinking, new ideas, to deal with problems we face now and in the future to come. Now, it's been said that we have a little bit of a problem with having a recall election, and there's been some misinformation. I'd like to give you the updated information, and this is from Alex Oliviar, Division Manager of Election Information and Preparation, Los Angeles County Register, Recorder, and Clerk. And it says that we have two options. Option number one is to have the recall election on November 6th, 2018, to coincide with the statewide general election. And this option scenario has an estimated cost of approximately $40,000 to $45,000. However, the second option is a standalone recall election for the two council members to be recalled on the ballot, Peggy Lemmons and Diane Martinez. This second option, the second scenario, is estimated to cost between $240,000 to $280,000. It is not practical for us to wait for the additional time to have the recall. It will save us approximately a quarter million dollars to do it earlier than to wait, and it's time for new blood. It's time for, for people to start thinking outside of the, the common box, because the common box is starting to look round, and we need to start looking outside the box. Thank you.
Next speaker card?
Yes, Madam Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Robert Ibarra, and Mr. Ibarra would like to talk about CalWorks.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Ibarra.
I just wanted to ask the city council if they knew that the local CalWorks job source is shutting down next week. If you are familiar with it, are you, is there any way you could do something to maybe encourage them to stay, or do you have any alternative ideas for people who are looking for work?
I, I can comment on that, yeah, Mr. Ibarra. What Mr. Ibarra is referring to is the SASFA Center that we have over on Colorado Avenue, yes. We were recently redistricted out of that region that includes SASFA and put under Hub Cities, which is another job, a workforce investment bureau, and Hub Cities is located directly in Huntington Park. So it's a county issue that we've been in touch with the county on, hoping that they would open up a satellite office close to Paramount, because we are very concerned about that as well. After meeting with county officials, we, we learned that there is going to be a satellite office open in this part of the region. They wouldn't specifically say whereabouts it is at this point, because they're still in negotiations with different landlords, but we're told that it would be close to Paramount. So, but it won't be for the next year or so, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other cards?
Yes, Madam Mayor, our next one is from Mr. Richard Alanis, and he would like to discuss the cost of the recall.
Good evening, council members.
Good evening.
City staff. To the 56,000 residents of Paramount, to the 23,000 voters of Paramount, I'm Richard Alanis, working directly with Let Paramount Vote in 2018. We are the proponents for the current recall in Paramount. First-ever recall in Paramount, California. However, recalls are not uncommon. Since last year and going on right now in nearby cities such as Pico Rivera, Montebello, Long Beach, there are recalls going on right now. Council members are being recalled. Most recently, June 5th, a state senator of California, Josh Newman, was recalled on the June 5th ballot. Recalls are not uncommon. At times, they're necessary. Now, a lady came up and spoke about the figures. I want to clear that real fast. Yes, we do have official verification from the Los Angeles County Division, signed by Dean Logan, the actual register recorder, $42,000 to $45,000 for a November recall election to coincide with, with the general election statewide. Approximately $280,000 for a standalone. Standalone means an election by itself with no other item on the ballot. Now, I'm hoping that many residents and voters get this clear. These are the actual figures. The recall is going successful, but before I even get on my time limit, we are canvassing, we are getting signatures. These voters are not happy with these 5:00 PM meetings. This is a working-class community. Eighty-five percent of these residents are Latino. They cannot physically make these meetings. This is something that must be addressed. I'm speaking on behalf of them. Term limits is a huge issue. There are term limits for our presidents of our United States. Most cities have term limits in our region. Paramount has no term limits. It is the reason why I have to explain, and our proponents who are circulating petitions have to explain, the reason why council members can sit for decades on a city council. Term limits should be implemented in this city. It is one of the foundations for this recall. The voters do not care if they had a chance to vote last year. They voted last year, but they want to vote this year. Governor Brown signed two laws giving them the right to vote this year. Council majority voted against that. So I want to let the residents know the actual cost of a recall and one of the grounds for the recall. Thank you.
Next?
Yes, Madam Mayor, next speaker's card is from Ms. Wanda Selby. Ms. Selby would like to discuss about the recall.
Hi, I'm Wanda Selby. I've been a member of this community for 50 years. I grew up here, went to school here. I know many of you. You might not know me, but I know you. I got this flyer today, and I said, "Recall. Didn't we vote?" Yes, we did. So the whole thing about the recall, I am completely against it. In 2020, I believe that we will have the opportunity to vote again, and if people want to run against you or with you, they have that opportunity and should be given that opportunity. They can put forth their money, campaign, and if somebody votes for them, voila, they will be sitting in your seat. I believe that whether it's 45 grand or a quarter of a million dollars, it's ridiculous amount of money when you have an opportunity to vote. If you don't exercise your opportunity and your right and your privilege, that's on you. I believe that you guys do a fantastic job. I've seen nothing but growth in this community. Sometimes it's a little hard to take at first, but then I get used to it, and I'm like, "Oh, that's good." I mean, you know, look at what's going on in our community, and that's because of the council. And whether or not you've been sitting here for five years, 10 years, there's progress. And I think you guys do think outside the box. Our city has been awarded many things: our White Picket Fence Initiative, our Pocket Parks, our gang prevention. Everything that the city has done has been nothing but improvement for our city. And it, I get comments all the time from people, especially in Bellflower. They're like, "How come we can't be like you guys?" And I'm like, "Because we're Paramount, man. We're Paramount." And they're like, "You guys do all this stuff, and people copy us on purpose, right? You get a write-up in the LA Times, it goes across the country. I think you guys are doing a fantastic job." And I don't think anybody should recall. If you choose not to run next time for whatever reason, fine, the next person can step up. As far as the meeting goes and all that other minutia that they were talking about, okay, you can move the time, but, you know, that'll be fine. I'm okay with that. And I think it's just a waste of money for us to have any election that is not during an election year. I don't think you should put it on this ballot, because that's 45 grand out the window. They could be used for something better. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Thank you. No, ma'am, that's it.
Okay. Okay. Okay, let's move on to our consent calendar.
Actually, we don't have a consent.
Excuse me. Okay, new business, item eight, a word of contract.
Actually, we're at an old business, Madam Mayor.
Where are we?
Yeah, item seven.
I'm sorry. Okay. Item seven, old business interim urgency ordinance number 1103. Staff report, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor. At the last City Council meeting, the City Council directed the city attorney to draft an urgency ordinance that would establish a moratorium on any new resident permit parking areas in the city. Prior to making this decision, the council heard a report from our Public Safety Director detailing the issues that the city is facing with the recent surge in the request for resident permit parking. These issues include decreased parking availability for all the residents in some of our most densely populated neighborhoods. In some cases, creation of this parking crunch has led to neighborhood disputes, which we are told is not good. So that's why we are here to address this issue, and I'll turn it over right now to our Public Safety Director, Ms. Adriana Lopez, who will handle the item. Adriana?
Thank you, John. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. As John mentioned, this is an item that came before you last, or earlier this month. I'll start by just giving you a brief background once again. And in 1971, the city council adopted or amended Section 29-6 with ordinance number nine, I'm sorry, 305, which authorizes the installation of traffic control devices. And in 1983, the city ordinance number 556, in combination with ordinance 305, established the first resident permit parking neighborhood in our city. This was in regards to the concerns that were being voiced from the neighborhood located on the First, Second, Third Street and Orozaba Avenue. This was directly related to the swap meet parking. Since 2010, 11 requests for resident permit parking have been received, and nine out of 11 requests were received from 2016 to 2017. Currently, we have five requests that are pending. As you can see in this chart, we've had a increase in requests and approval. As you can see, it's really tripled in request. And if we look at the intent of resident permit parking, the original intent was to address parking in neighborhoods that were being affected by retail centers or by customers that were visiting these retail centers and were impacting the neighborhood parking. If we look at the last 11 requests, it hasn't really followed the original intent. The voters do not care if they had a chance to vote last year. They voted last year, but they want to vote this year. Governor Brown signed two laws giving them the right to vote this year. Council majority voted against that. So I want to let the residents know the actual cost of a recall and one of the grounds for the recall. Thank you.
Next.
Yes, Madam Mayor, next speaker's card is from Ms. Wanda Selby. Ms. Selby would like to discuss about the recall.
Hi, I'm Wanda Selby. I've been a member of this community for 50 years. I grew up here, went to school here. I know many of you. You might not know me, but I know you. I got this flyer today, and I said, "Recall. Didn't we vote?" Yes, we did. So the whole thing about the recall, I am completely against it. In 2020, I believe that we will have the opportunity to vote again, and if people want to run against you or with you, they have that opportunity and should be given that opportunity. They can put forth their money, campaign, and if somebody votes for them, voila, they will be sitting in your seat. I believe that whether it's 45 grand or a quarter of a million dollars, it's ridiculous amount of money when you have an opportunity to vote. If you don't exercise your opportunity and your right and your privilege, that's on you. I believe that you guys do a fantastic job. I've seen nothing but growth in this community. Sometimes it's a little hard to take at first, but then I get used to it. I'm like, "Oh, that's good." I mean, you know, look at what's going on in our community, and that's because of the council. And whether or not you've been sitting here for five years, 10 years, there's progress. And I think you guys do think outside the box. Our city has been awarded many things. Our White Picket Fence Initiative, our Pocket Parks, our gang prevention, everything that the city has done has been nothing but improvement for our city. And I get comments all the time from people, especially in Bellflower. They're like, "How come we can't be like you guys?" And I'm like, "Because we're Paramount, man. We're Paramount." And they're like, "You guys do all this stuff, and people copy us on purpose, right? You get a write-off in the LA Times, it goes across the country. I think you guys are doing a fantastic job." And I don't think anybody should recall. If you choose not to run next time for whatever reason, fine, the next person can step up. As far as the meeting goes and all that other minutia that they were talking about, okay, you can move the time. But, you know, that'll be fine. I'm okay with that. And I think it's just a waste of money for us to have any election that is not during an election year. I don't think you should put it on this ballot because that's 45 grand out the window. They could be used for something better. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Thank you. No, ma'am, that's it.
Okay. Okay, let's move on to our consent calendar.
Actually, we don't have a consent.
Excuse me.
No problem.
Okay, new business, item eight, award of contract.
Actually, we have an old business, Madam Mayor.
Where are we?
Yeah, item seven.
I'm sorry, okay. Item seven, old business interim urgency ordinance number 1103. Staff report, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor. At the last city council meeting, the city council directed the city attorney to draft an urgency ordinance that would establish a moratorium on any new resident permit parking areas in the city. Prior to making this decision, the council heard a report from our public safety director detailing the issues that the city is facing with the recent surge in the request for resident permit parking. These issues include decreased parking availability for all the residents in some of our most densely populated neighborhoods. In some cases, creation of this parking crunch has led to neighborhood disputes, which we are told is not good. So that's why we are here to address this issue, and I'll turn it over right now to our public safety director, Ms. Adriana Lopez, who will handle the item. Adriana?
Thank you, John. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. As John mentioned, this is an item that came before you last or earlier this month. I'll start by just giving you a brief background once again. And in 1971, the city council adopted or amended Section 29-6 with ordinance number nine, I'm sorry, 305, which authorizes the installation of traffic control devices. And in 1983, the city ordinance number 556, in combination with ordinance 305, established the first resident permit parking neighborhood in our city. This was in regards to the concerns that were being voiced from the neighborhood located on the First, Second, Third Street and Orizaba Avenue. This was directly related to the swap meet parking. Since 2010, 11 requests for resident permit parking have been received, and nine out of 11 requests were received from 2016 to 2017. Currently, we have five requests that are pending. As you can see in this chart, we've had an increase in requests and approval. As you can see, it's really tripled in request. And if we look at the intent of resident permit parking, the original intent was to address parking in neighborhoods that were being affected by retail centers or by customers that were visiting these retail centers and were impacting the neighborhood parking. If we look at the last 11 requests, it hasn't really followed the original intent. Some of the last requests have impacted only seven homes, and like John mentioned, it's created disputes among neighbors and also has increased the calls for service regarding people physically fighting for parking spots. Our recent efforts have included that we've taken this item to the Public Safety Commission in May, and with the public commission's direction, they asked that we evaluate a formal criteria to address further requests. As mentioned, this item became before you on June 5th, and you directed the city attorney to prepare an urgency ordinance, and that's what we're bringing before you today. What we plan on doing is we plan on conducting a survey of cities that have resident permit parking neighborhoods. And what we're going to ask for is an extension, a six-month extension, to allow us to take this item to our Public Safety Commission and work out all the details regarding the formal criteria. Once we do that, we'll come back and present it to the city council. So the recommended action tonight is that we recommend that the city council read by title only, wait for the reading, and adopt interim urgency number 1103, suspending further approval of any resident permit parking request.
Are there any questions for Ms. Lopez?
I don't have a question, Madam Mayor, but I would just like for the audience, for clarification, to say the reason that we're looking at this is because of approving the parking permits. Over time, we've found that it tends to overlap in other communities, and then they're getting impacted. So it's not that we don't realize that there's a parking issue that we need to deal with in the city, but we have to find a strategic way to do it to where we're not pushing the problem from one neighborhood to another and creating issues. So that's what we're going to be studying. And with that, Madam Mayor, I would move the item.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Item eight, award of contract. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, you may, Madam Mayor. These next two items, item eight and nine, involve one of the core missions that a city does, and that is to provide streets that are smoothly paved and safe to drive on. You'll see that in this year's budget and in next year's budget, which will be presented to you in a few minutes here, we're doing a lot to preserve and maintain our roads for the community. This surge in paving activities has been made possible actually through an infusion of new gas tax revenue that we saw come in earlier this year from the state of California. So we're putting these gas tax dollars to work locally, and here's our interim public works director, Ms. Sarah Ho, to tell you which residential streets will be included in this project. Sarah?
Thank you, John. Madam Mayor, members of council. The item that I have before you this evening is the award of contract for the neighborhood street resurfacing improvements for CIP 9831. On May 15th, public work staff opened bids, five bids for this project. The apparent low bid was submitted by Sequel Contractors Incorporated and amounted to $737,704.50. The high bid was just over $870,000. The bid from Sequel Contractors was approximately $64,000 over the budgeted amount. However, we plan to utilize additional gas tax funds for that amount, and it's already been reflected in the budget that you'll see later on this evening. Shown on the map here are the streets that we're planning on resurfacing. San Juan from Orange to El Camino, San Miguel from Orange to El Camino, El Camino from San Carlos to Somerset, and then over in the north side of town, Merkel Avenue from Century Boulevard to Somerset Ranch Road South. Even though the project was budgeted in the current fiscal year, we were unable to start until after July 1st, so what we'll be doing is carrying over funds to the next fiscal year. That concludes this part of the presentation. If you have any questions?
Any questions?
Move the item.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Item nine, award of contract.
Now, Sarah will tell us about the main boulevard to be repaved. Sarah?
Thank you, John. The second item that I have for you this evening is an award of contract for the construction of the, oh, wait, I don't have the right slide here. There we go. The arterial street resurfacing improvements that will be on Paramount Boulevard from Somerset to Rosecrans, CIP 9830. On May 29th, public work staff opened three bids for this project. The apparent low bid was submitted by All American Asphalt and amounted to $838,700, while the high bid was well over $995,000. The cost from All American is approximately $14,000 over budget. Similar to the last one here, we're able to pay for overage with Prop C funding this time, and that has also been reflected in the budget that you'll see later on this evening. Also, this project was originally budgeted in the current fiscal year. However, we were unable to start until after July 1st. We're also going to carry over funding from this project to next fiscal year. I'm available if you have any other questions about this one.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah, is there a reason for the overages on both of them? I mean, was it put off for some time, were the bids done very early?
No, I think we're seeing a little bit of an increase in just material costs. And so when we look at that for the next round of projects, we'll take those numbers into account to give us a better number for when we go out to bid on the next one.
That's why I assume that we go off last year's budget and add some percentages, and we didn't realize how much the materials had actually gone up.
They had gone up, correct.
Thank you. I'll move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Item 10, resolution number 18020. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Almost 25 years ago, the city established an Arts and Public Places Fund, and by collecting money from new developments around town, we were able to purchase a number of public art pieces, which are currently prominently displayed around town for the public to enjoy. We'd now like to expand the potential use of these funds, and if approved tonight, this proposed expanded use of the funds would greatly fulfill our community's thriving need to participate in the arts. Am I still? Mic's off. Rebooting the system. Well, I'll continue if you can all hear me, but we'll need the slides to go on. So as you saw earlier this evening, we have some pretty talented artists in town, so this would help us to supplement this program. So with that, I'll turn it over to Assistant City Manager Kevin Chun as soon as the slide or the projector is going.
All right. Well, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. We'll get started with this as soon as the system comes back online. There we go. All right. As you may know, the city's public art program was established in the mid-1980s as a means to help relieve some of the impacts of development in Paramount's urban environment and to enhance the appearance of the community. Since the program was initiated, the city has installed 30 art pieces in highly visible locations throughout the community. In the beginning, the program was based on voluntary contributions, which was positive as it involved the spirit of giving by the development community, but it didn't make for a steady revenue stream for our public art program. In 1993, the public art fee was put into effect. It's a fee associated with development projects, both commercial and residential. For commercial projects with a building permit valuation over $100,000, a 1% fee is collected for the public arts program. This also applies to residential projects if there are five or more units involved and the overall project is valued at more than $100,000. Over the years, funds in the public arts fee account has fluctuated depending on the number of building projects and art projects that are in the works. However, there is currently a balance of about $130,000. Also, in 1993, guidelines were prepared to direct how the program was to be administered. The guidelines call for the program to provide cultural opportunities and activities for the community through public art, but it also allowed for funds to be used, but I'm sorry, but it only allowed for funds to be used for the purchase of artworks. The guidelines have served the community well over the years. However, through this request, staff is recommending an expansion of the public art program in order to include other community-related opportunities more than just art pieces. Ideas for using the city's art funds include art events, competitions, and galleries, which currently aren't allowed under the guidelines. With your approval tonight, the guidelines will be updated to allow for a wider arts program in the city. So with that, staff asks for your approval of this item.
Mr. Chun, I have a question. Is there, will music be implemented in this arena?
Yes. So the intent of this expansion was to allow for, you know, as wide of a variety of art-type programming that, you know, we could take advantage of. So, you know, again, while this program was once only used for art pieces, statues, et cetera, that you see out there in the community, we wanted to have the ability to go in different directions regarding art. So that would be included, yes.
Yeah, because there is research, students that are educated in the arts, that their test scores are higher than those that aren't exposed to the arts. So I'm very much in favor of this.
Yes, I have a question also. I mean, there's a lot of history here in Paramount. I've been here pretty much all my life. Is there any way we could possibly add in something, public historical artifacts or displays type of thing, too? Could that be added into this?
Sure. And again, I think that's the intent of the expansion here, is to allow for those kinds of, those kind of events or activities. So I guess the short answer is yes.
Wonderful.
Yes.
So we can definitely add that. If it's the council's desire, we would just amend the resolution to include historical art exhibits and displays and artifacts.
Madam Mayor, how many pieces of outdoor public art do we have right now? Do I count?
We have 30.
30?
30 pieces, yes.
With that, I would make the motion to approve with the addition of adding the addition of historical artwork.
We'll word it, yes.
Okay.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Item 11, the budget fiscal year 2019.
Yes, Madam Mayor, our last item of business tonight on the agenda is a substantial one, and that's the intensive review and approval of the fiscal year 2019 budget. The fiscal year begins on July 1st, as you know. So if you're comfortable with the spending plan that we're presenting before you tonight, we're also seeking your approval of the budget tonight. There are a number of resolutions, as you can see from your agenda, and service agreements that accompany the budget approval that we'll also need motions on tonight, which will be at the end of the presentation and discussion. So we'll first start off with a big-picture financial presentation similar to what you saw at the last council meeting, and then what we'll do is we'll have a department-by-department review of the budget for you today. After each department had reviews, their specific area, they'll pause to answer any of your questions you may have, but as always, please feel free to interrupt us along the way if you see anything that comes to mind or if you have any questions about that. Additionally, as we have done so in the past, because we expect this to be a fairly long and in-depth presentation, if at any time the city council wishes to take a recess and take a break about it, please let us know because it's a lot of information we're going to present to you tonight. So now, as far as the budget is concerned, staff has been developing this budget since April. As with any budget that we bring to you, a lot of work, mostly by our finance department, has been done to get us to the point that we are at today. The budget is a sound spending plan that uses very conservative principles of municipal finance while at the same time addressing the needs and desires that we know that the community has. In a local, in our local economy, we're seeing flat sales tax revenue for the general fund, but we continue to maximize our use of grant funds to bring much-needed projects and services to our residents and businesses. While at the same time, you'll also see that many of the fun events and programs that the community has known to love and expect are fully funded in this budget once again. We even added a few things here that, here and there, that I think you'll enjoy. So with that, I'll turn it over to Karina to start us off, and then we'll go department by department. Karina?
Thank you, John. Madam Mayor and members of the council, John can I brief you what we're going to do tonight? What I want to add to the introduction is that this budget, once again, funds all essential city services, from law enforcement, capital improvement projects, fun event and all that. But what's unique about this project this year is a proposed deficit. Now, this is not a structural deficit. What it is, is related to a potential recall that is for accounting purposes, we have to recognize this potential expenditure. So with that, we will give you more detail later on tonight, and I'll start with financial. And first is our revenues. When comparing next year to the current fiscal year, revenues are flat, approximately $44.8 million total when we combine all city funds, including the general fund, water fund, and restricted-use funds. There is a minor decrease in the unrestricted portion, which offset by increases in the restricted funds category. So overall, there's an increase of about $100,000 increase when comparing next year to this year. The high mark in 2013 represents a large state grants that we receive for the construction of the Salute Park. Now, this is the same chart as the previous slide, which is the overall revenue. What we added here is a general fund component in green. As you can see, when comparing next year to the current year, the makeup of the general fund and restricted funds is similar. The general fund has a slight drop, about $45,000, while there is an increase of about $150,000 in the restricted revenues. I do want to point out that there is a $6.7 million source that is not indicated here as revenue, and it's because it's a loan that we borrowed from the I-Bank for the construction of the new well. It is not classified as revenue, although you're going to see a huge increase in expenditures in the capital improvement side, but we do have a source for it because we did secure a loan. Earlier, we inserted the general fund into the overall revenues. Here, we added sales tax into the general fund in brown. As you can see, sales tax makes up about 30% of the total unrestricted fund or the general fund. We are budgeting $100,000 increase in sales tax next year at about $7.9 million. The blue bar represents the total general fund revenues, including MVLF, property tax, which we are expecting that to increase in fiscal year 2019. That's also offsetting negative adjustments such as licenses and other categories. Now, when we carve out the brown portion, which is sales tax, here you see the history since 2008. Our assumption for next year is that fuel prices will remain about the same, and retail establishment will also be about the same. The sales tax estimate is at $7.9 million. While sales tax is maintaining at a good level, is pretty stable, we are barely exceeding the pre-recession, pre-recession level in 2008. So the growth is quite slow, and we are hopeful that our shop, our local campaign, will continue to make an impact in our community. As part of the budget review, we also look at utility users' tax as a follow-up to Measure P. Since Measure P was passed in 2015, we have been receiving higher amount of utility users' tax. At the same time, we have experienced utility users' tax refund or exemption request. So there has been some decreases in the past three years. For next year, we're budgeting flat at about $3.6 million. Utility users' tax is about $3.6 million in fiscal year 19, and is close to half of the total sales tax amount. While this is a significant source of income, certainly it is not enough to cover the annual $5 to $6 million loss of revenues because of the elimination of redevelopment a few years ago. However, this is still a stable source of income for us to help us make ends meet. Annually, we perform utility users' tax analysis, making sure providers are submitting the right percentage of revenues to us. As for fees, there are a couple of enhancements we are proposing. One is business license. Last year's consumer price index increase was 3.6%, therefore we are recommending a 3.6% increase for business license. In terms of our water rate, as you know, we continue to maintain some of the lowest rates in the region. You'll see that in the following chart. At this time, we are recommending a 7% rate increase to offset production costs and other operational cost increase in the fiscal year. Many years ago, water consumption was a lot higher in California. After experiencing droughts in the past few years, our water consumption habits have certainly changed. In Paramount, for single-family residential, average consumption is about 27 units every two months during the summertime. With this consumption level, our rates are just right above downy. Now, once we factor in 7% rate increase, our position remains the same, and the increase is about $5.25 increase every two months. If this is approved by the council tonight, we will start the Proposition 218 process, which we will start noticing and send that to every resident in town, and then we will do public hearing before the rates will take effect in September. So where we are after the rate increase in terms of our financials, well, this is a snapshot for fiscal year 19. Because of the new water well construction, next year, we are adding $134,000 debt service to pay back the loan. In addition, with the implementation of a new back the loan. In addition, with the implementation of a new accounting standard, $171,000 is added to the expenditure for pension reporting purpose. Total of these two items added $305,000 expenditures to our book. With the operational cost increase imposed by Metropolitan Water District and Central Basin and other operational cost increase, and also using a conservative revenue projection approach, we are projecting a $409,500 deficit even with this rate increase we are proposing. And the good thing is, we have enough fund balance, and we are proposing to use the fund balance to pay for this deficit. Keep in mind, if water consumption goes up and we're able to use increase of the revenue projection, and once the new water well is completed, we'll be less dependent on portable water. That will lower our production costs, and our finances will get better. We'll watch this carefully and update you at mid-year. Next, we'll cover expenditures. The brown bar represents our operations, and the blue represents capital improvements. In our operations, next year, we'll expand about $43 million total, which is about $700,000 increase when compared to this year. The $43 million here includes all operational cost increase, such as contract increases from the sheriff department and other contracts, and even the potential recall election. Also, the proposed cost-of-living adjustment for employees included. As for capital improvements, there is a huge jump, about $9 million increase, mainly related to the construction of a new water well and other capital projects. Once again, we have obtained a loan for this project, and we'll be using the I-Bank, a loan proceeds, to pay for the construction of the new well. This chart shows you how our operating department are, and how our finances is distributed among departments. Total, we are spending $33.5 million among departments, and of course, public safety has the largest expenditure. We're allocating 36% of our resources to public safety. We are proposing close to $13 million for capital improvement projects in the coming year. Of that, $6.8 million for water projects, including a new water well, close to $6 million for streets, $279,000 for park projects, and $161,000 for miscellaneous projects. We are focusing on many of our traditional projects, also designed that would help position ourselves for future grant opportunities. Sarah will give you more detail as she goes through the capital improvement section with you later on this evening. That's all for the financial data. We can pause if you have questions.
Any questions?
Not at this time.
Thank you, Karina.
If not, David Johnson, our Community Services and Recreation Director, will go through Community Promotion and Recreation.
Thank you, Karina, Mayor and City Council. We are going to go into Community Promotion and Organizational Funding first. Our Community Promotion has multiple city events budgeted and located in that division. The other special events that you know and so well are actually budgeted in our Recreation Budget, but all the part-time pay is actually budgeted in Recreation Department. Our Heritage and Eco-Friendly Fair were first-time events for FY18, and they're budgeted for FY19 as well. Our Christmas train, our Santa train, is going to go into its 50th year of service. So we get to celebrate a 50th anniversary for our Christmas train as it celebrates its landmark year. And then new for this year, for our Community Promotion Department, is our Veteran Celebration Fair. It is planned for November 3rd, and so far, we're working with all the service clubs in Paramount to plan this event. The Community Promotion also has the budgets for our new Boulevard of Scholars banner program, the city publications, and our Pitch in Paramount program. A large part of our Community Promotion budget is funding for community groups that provide services that the city does not provide. We currently have 15 groups budgeted in this year's Community Promotion Program. There are no new groups that did come forward and requested funding, but we do have a process. If there are any new groups that do come to us, we will bring them before City Council, and then they'll be added to either our mid-year or final budget. Whoops, one too many. So we have three funding mechanisms that you can achieve funding as a community organization. The first one is our youth league funding. So if you're a sports league, you actually are allocated a certain amount of dollars. It's up to $10,000 max, but it's $55 per child, and that's an eligible resident or POSD student. And again, they can, depending on how many participants they have in the program, they're eligible up to $10,000. Both Paramount Girls' Softball and Paramount Youth Soccer Organization are funded their first time in FY18, and this will be their second year in FY19. The second wave is through our funding matrix. This is where the majority of the groups fall under. Again, these are all returning groups, and there are no new requests this year. I just wanted to note, the YMCA on the bottom, as noted, has been moved to the Recreation Budget, and it now represents, as it now represents, a contractual arrangement to provide a number of services to the city for youth programming. The last funding mechanism is our special event funding. So these are groups that provide a service or a community event in the city. Friends of Paramount Library were funded for the first time in FY18, and they are requesting similar fundings for their library open house event in FY19. To Peak, as they have done for several years now, is asking for funding for two community events that they do, and Traditional Artists Guild for their art show. This chart is a summary of all those funded groups. As mentioned prior, there are no new groups requesting funding, and the three groups, Paramount Youth Soccer, Paramount Girls' Softball, and Friends of the Library are in their second year of funding. This slide is a summary of all the other activities funded by this division. The 2017 actuals that you see for flowers and donations is higher than normal, because there were funds donated in FY17 to the Safe Surrender Program on behalf of retiring Supervisor Don Knobby. The actuals for 2017 for plaques and certificates is also higher than normal, and as that year, we had to replenish our stock of plaques and certificates. In both cases, the funding level has gone down to its normal level. The Senior Thanksgiving Event typically is budgeted around that $7,050, but can cost less, as determined by the amount of donations that we receive in any given year. If you take a look at FY17 and FY18, you can identify that we actually were able to get more funds donated in FY17 than 18, but in each case, it was lower than the budgeted amount. Our Christmas Decoration Budget is up slightly. This, again, allows the Public Works Department to go ahead and purchase new ornaments for our tree when we do the tree linings, to make sure the tree looks fantastic for that event. In March, if you take a look at City Publications, in March, we switched to a smaller monthly round town in lieu of the multi-page around town that we sent out quarterly. So now it's going out monthly. It's a single page. And we also instituted an e-version of that. It's simpler, it's easier to read, and provides more constant communication with our residents in this monthly format. However, this new format will be evaluated in FY19, and we will come back with results and recommendations. And lastly, the Community Promotion Events that you see there on the bottom, it's very high in FY17, and then went down to our current level of 95, 600. That's because in FY17, that's when we had all our 60th anniversary events programmed.
David, if you may move on. Madam Mayor, can I ask a question? I didn't hear you explain the train.
Oh, I'm going to that.
Oh, well, it was there on this list, so.
I'm sorry. I should then have led into that. So, yes, there's a, there's a big jump there in the train.
No, I was like, wait, wait, wait.
No, I just can't get anything by you, can I? But I've got a slide for you. So, as we mentioned before, we are celebrating our 50th anniversary of operating the Santa Train. So we have budgeted a lot of fun items that we will be giving out to our community to celebrate this very landmark occasion for this train. All the typical things that we've done in the past, but, you know, in this case, because it's a train, we're looking at train whistles and various children's toys. Now, that logo that you see there, that's just a working logo at this point. We haven't settled anything, and certainly we'll run by any logo for that event by the council. But again, we want to find something that's fun, because this is a very unique thing that you can find in any city where they've run something successfully for 50 years, something as huge as the Santa Train program. So we'll be doing, in this budget, also a lot of marketing about this occasion. We're planning a 50th anniversary train wrap special for that one year for the caboose of the train, and then be running various contests for the community to win all those interesting promotional items. Councilmember Lemmons, any questions?
No, not now.
Well, before I go into the Recreation Department, are there any other questions about the Community Promotion Division? Nope? Okay, off into Recreation. All right. So the Recreation Department houses all those other special events that we know, that you can see up on the screen there. And again, all our part-time staff costs associated with running these events lies in the Recreation Department. These are events, along with the Community Promotion Events, that bring our community together in very positive ways. There's also a lot of summer programming that comes out of the Recreation Department. SNAP, Dr. Perez alluded to it when she commented to council. SNAP, we call our Summer Nutrition Activity Program. This is a collaboration between the district and the city, and during the summer, students can go to 15 different school sites. They can go get a breakfast, a very healthy breakfast served by the district, and at lunch as well. And in between breakfast and lunch, there are city staff on those sites, making sure the kids are engaged in positive recreational activities. We run a summer day camp program. We're one of the few cities, I'll challenge anybody to find someone who runs a day camp program from 7:00 in the morning to 6:00 at night. There are, typically, they charge you extra for that. We don't. We offer it at a very affordable rate of $80 per week. And we, as you see in the picture there, that top right photo, we take them on excursions, we do all kinds of fun activities. I think that excursion was to Universal Studios. You see on the bottom left, that's our new footsall courts. So we also have adjacent to that our gym. We open up the footsall courts and gym for free play during the summer, so people can get some exercise in. And then, as usual, we run our swim program. We're working in collaboration with the YMCA to offer swim lessons. The city staff have lifeguards that will still run the Recreation Swim Program. In addition to that, we still are offering our Fun Friday for our swim lesson participants. So every Friday, we allow all the swim lesson participants to come into the pool and have a kind of a dedicated day in the water. And then we also will end the season with our swim lessons. The city will still provide our annual luau for all the swim lesson participants. And then, these are the variety of other programming that we do year-round. STAR, as everybody knows, is our biggest operational program. Again, we receive about $2 million from the state of California to run an after-school program. Again, we do that at 15 different school sites. Our senior program and our Elderly Nutrition Program, those are some of the biggest in the area. HSA, who runs our meal program, this is their biggest site. On average, we have about 134 seniors per day. When we have a special event or dance, we're up to 240 or more seniors coming to our center to enjoy the programming that we do. And then, new to Recreation for the FY19 budget is a photo event with the Easter Bunny. It's going to be similar to the photos that we do with Santa. We will do this one weekend prior to when To Peak Sister Cities does their Day of the Child event. We will have the Easter Bunny in the community center. We'll have our photographer, Ken Matsui, take professional photographs of people who want to take a picture with the Easter Bunny, and then he will donate a portion of his proceeds to our scholarship program with Pep. We're also collaborating, for the first time ever, with Friday Night Lights flag football program. This is a very exciting flag football program, new to our community. You typically see this in communities like Los Alamos and Huntington Beach. We're able to offer it for more than half the price that they're able to do in those communities. And we're also continuing to work with Paramount Unified School District to develop an add-on program to our GRIP program that will develop leadership and civic behavior for our middle schoolers that will then hopefully feed those kids into our youth commission program. This year, we'll be really looking into the GRIP program, as there appears to be some redundancy with the district programs, like their Safe and Civil program being taught at all the school sites. This year, we'll also be seeing that the fifth grade program, the GRIP program, that will be out now taught in the fourth grade. Paramount Unified School District requested that we move it from fifth to fourth grade, so you'll be seeing that instituted this year as well. So now, we're going into some of the capital outlay items in the Recreation Budget. We have, first up, our park upgrades. These park upgrades largely reflect a movement that we're making away from the vinyl-coated steel picnic tables and trash cans to more vandal-resistant concrete equipment. You see the table on the right. That actually is one of the concrete tables that we put in at Orange Splash Zone. So again, at our parks, they do come in a rectangular version, which we'll be using. So All American, this year, All American Park is getting a few of these tables in this year's budget, and we're also going to get concrete tables for Paramount Pool through a Proposition A grant. For FY19, we are requesting funding to upgrade the trash receptacles at All American Park to these concrete units, and upgrade the tables at the Paramount Ash Tree, I'm sorry, the Progress Park Ash Tree, to concrete as well. Lastly, we're continuing to replace the original exercise equipment that was installed back in 2006 at Dills Park, and this is probably the second, second, well, there's probably two more years before we get all those old pieces replaced. Continuing with the park upgrades, we have, our gymnasium has some very old equipment. I think this is probably, the volleyball system goes back to the 1970s. So we'll be replacing that with a lighter, more safe system. At Paramount Park, we're adding an additional bike rack. A lot of our seniors actually ride their bikes to the senior center, so we actually ran out of space for them to tie up their bikes, so we'll be adding another bike rack. To address our community's concerns about allowing dogs on the, on parks, we have worked with the city of Southgate, as you know, and partnered with them in helping them with their dog park, which is on our northern border, and encouraging Paramount residents to use that dog park. But we'll also be addressing this year, new park rules that will allow leash dogs at various city parks and with city council approval. In addition to all these other, we'll be bringing a various park ordinance to the city council. We will need to update our signs at our city parks to make sure that they're adequately signed. In both cases, with the additional signage and the dog weigh stations, we'll make sure that we, we will not buy these until we've gone to council and gotten approval on some of these ordinances. Moving over to facility upgrades, we are upgrading the art at the newly renamed Mariposa Center. This is formerly Progress Plaza East. With inclusion of the YMCA after-school program at Mariposa, we are converting the interior to look something more youth-centric and playful in line with its butterfly name. Now, since Clearwater is one of our premier facilities that sees a lot of exposure to city council members and city managers, we are requesting to upgrade the event tables at that site. These event tables do not require linens to look very professional, and by doing so, we actually will save a little bit of money on linens, linen cleaning. At the community center, we're going to install an automatic external defibrillator. Hey, I said it right, an AED system. We just installed one at Paramount Pool, as legislation allowed us to do so. We find it necessary, it'd be smart of us and safer for us to install this at the community center, since that is where our senior program is housed, and we want to make sure that we have that equipment if there was an incident to occur. Then lastly, we have in our budget a replacement vehicle. We are replacing an older gas-powered vehicle with a hybrid vehicle, and it is actually through a grant fund. And I'd be happy to ask her any questions about our Recreation Department before I hand it over to our Assistant City Manager, Kevin Chutten.
Any questions for David?
I have a question, Madam Mayor. Do we have defibrillators existing at any facilities right now?
No, currently, the only place that we have one is at Paramount Pool.
A special I saw, I don't know if this is within the realm of what the city has, but they're not very expensive. They were only a few hundred dollars, right?
No, actually, they're about $2,000.
Oh. I wonder if there's a different one, because they showed the ones that, the special I watched on the airport and stuff like that, and they were only like $600, $700.
Well, we also purchase ours with a maintenance program. They get checked and monitored by an outside agency to make sure.
So it's an ongoing service cost, more than the actual piece?
Well, it's part, it's actually part of what, when we purchase it, it's part of that plan.
Because I would actually like to see them at all city facilities where people gather, myself. I mean, they, they just say the lives they can save are amazing, you know, and somebody who's there to, you know, have the training, whatever. I know, I've seen them in action, and they're kind of self-explanatory. A lot of them talk.
They do.
Yeah, talk you actually through it. So any place where large crowds would gather that were responsible for, as a city, I would just like to say, I would like to see them at all of our facilities. It's not an expensive purchase and can save a lot of lives.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Whoops, sorry, Kevin.
I'll get it. There we go. All right, it's my turn again. Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers, good evening again. I'll briefly be going over three different sections of the Administrative Services Department. In many ways, the budget for the department is largely the same. As you can see, we have IT or computer infrastructure-related expenditures. One large expense for $40,000 is for a vital data distribution equipment that's needed for our computer and phone network. This equipment is of strategic importance for the replacement of our aging phone system. We've been holding off for a while to replace our phones, as this process is a very large undertaking and comes with a very significant cost. We're nearing the end of the rope with our current phones, and we will very likely be coming back to you over the next 12-month period with a funding request. Aside from IT-related issues, there are
Aside from IT-related issues, there are also a couple other items of note. We're formally moving a part-time employee from Recreation to assist with our social media program, and we will continue to have minor expenditures related to the implementation of our communications program. In the city manager's office, we've budgeted $380,500 in anticipation of possible recall elections. As you can see on this slide, if there are two recall elections, the cost could run up to $579,000. Since this is an out-of-the-ordinary expenditure, staff is proposing to fund this cost out of the city's general fund reserve account. In terms of personnel issues, in order to comply with the state's minimum wage law and to maximize the benefits of our STAR program grant, we will be implementing a new pay scale for our part-time STAR employees. We would also like to upgrade an unfilled secretarial position to recreational specialist to help with our operational needs at our community center. We're also proposing a 4% COLA for all employees to help keep our employees' pay competitive in the market and also with inflation. We generally mark our COLAs with the Consumer Price Index, which is 3.6% over the last 12-month period, but for FY19, our request is rounded to 4%. However, the COLA will not be applied to the city manager and part-time STAR employees. Also, as you know, in another effort to help with our overall employment structure and to keep our positions competitive, we're finishing off a classification and compensation study that we started in FY18. We expect this to be done by the end of summer, and at that time, we'll bring all of the study findings back to you for you to review. So that's it for our Administrative Services Department. I'll pause there if you have any questions.
Any questions for Kevin?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I do have a question. Actually, what I would like to do is get clarification because of the public comments on the recall and the costs that you gave us and the costs that were stated by the public. I think this may be a question for the city clerk, but if you can answer it, that's fine. The numbers that we're giving, we had quotes from the Register Recorder's Office too, right? And those are the numbers they gave us.
That is correct.
Yes.
And John has some further information?
Yes, we do, Ms. Lemons. We do have a letter from the county Recorder's Office that quotes for us two election costs, which are represented there, plus accessory costs that the city clerk incurs to run an election. So not knowing if there are going to be one election for two council members, a recall election, or two elections for three council members, that's unknown to us right now. Obviously, we'll find out June 28th, I believe, if there's going to be two elections or one election. If the signatures for the one council member, Councilmember Hoffmeyer, are not turned in by June 28th, then we know that that election is canceled. So we will go with the lower number, which is $286,000 that you see on the screen. There was a comment about it going with the election being consolidated with the November election. The likelihood of that occurring is really not, doesn't seem to be in the cards right now. And that's because of the scheduling and everything that has to take place in order for it to fall on the November consolidated election. For instance, we got from the county, the last date for the signatures, I'm sorry, for the request for the election to be consolidated with the county, and that's August 10th. However, there's a number of things that have to occur prior to that August 10th date that just, it doesn't fit in that schedule. So the $42,000 that was quoted earlier during the public comment period, as you heard and you're asking about, that's again a consolidated election with the county. But there's a lot of steps that have to occur, and from the times, from looking at the calendar, it just is not going to happen unless they, even if they turn in the signatures tomorrow, it still doesn't fit. I'm looking at the city clerk sheet. From what you had proposed, or what you had showed, it just does not work, right?
Right. For the recall proposition that we had for Councilmember Hoffmeyer, the deadline actually is June 26th to file the petitions. So we did a worksheet based upon some tentative deadlines that we thought, you know, could possibly occur. I ran those proposals by the county, just to verify that my calculations were, you know, correct, and they did concur that they got the same results.
As far as the timing goes, that's correct. So it just, so the bottom line is, from the way the calendar works, if the signatures are submitted for the recall election, it would be a special election.
I just wanted, you know, clarification, especially for the public, so it sounds like the proponents don't take into account the additional costs that the city has to incur above and beyond the hard costs to the county, as well as stating just go with the November election, that there's a timeline to be met and certain procedures that have to be followed, and that doesn't happen either.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the Community Development Department. These are just a few of the highlights. And here are some notable expenditures. First is $25,000 to hire a consultant to develop a plan for updating our general plan. The general plan is our land use blueprint for development in the city, which was last updated in 2007. Since then, the state has added additional elements for cities to include in their general plans, and this expenditure will help us to prepare. As you may recall, the, a general plan update is a multi-year process involving a tremendous amount of staff time and community involvement, and also comes at a very significant cost. Fortunately, cities only have to do this once every 12 or 15 years or so, and following the completion of this initial work, we will report back to you on our plans for the actual update process. We will also continue with our annual commercial rehab and home improvement programs, which I will detail a little bit later. And we've added $10,000 to the budget for the ear, excuse me, for the air purifier rebate program that you previously discussed and directed staff to initiate. We, at this point, we don't have program parameters yet, but immediately following the approval of the budget, we will have those and bring those back to you for review. And just to remind you of what the FY19 budget allocation will allow for on an annual basis in terms of our current planning or projects that come to us over the counter, the department processes about 150 projects of various types, including about 30 that require a conditional use permit. The department also deals with many long-range planning issues. As examples of these, we're currently working on zoning amendments affecting our manufacturing zones, housing-related issues, and zone changes that are requested from time to time with developments. As these projects require modification to the municipal code, all of these come before the city council for approval, following a vetting process through the Planning Commission. Similarly, with building and safety, the FY19 budget will allow for the city to continue issuing building permits and performing necessary building inspections. Just to give you an idea of how much work is done thus far in fiscal year 18, the city has issued about 1,200 permits and completed over 12,000 inspections. And as I mentioned earlier, the budget will also allow for our commercial rehab program to continue. For FY19, the budget will allow for two projects. One project has been identified for the Candyotti property at 13913 Paramount Boulevard, which is on the north end of town, near the 101, near the 105 freeway. This will help to clean up a blighted property and building that's been in poor condition for many years, as you can see from these pictures. The second project has yet to be identified, but of course, all projects will be brought to you for review and approval. Next, our home improvement program is also included in the FY19 budget and will allow for needed improvements for four qualifying property owners. On this slide, are before and after pictures of projects completed in the current fiscal year, and shows the positive impact of our home funding program. And finally, our economic development work will continue in FY19. This work is primarily to retain and attract businesses in Paramount. As you know, we've been working to complete the Clearwater Crossing development with the second and final phase. We're working in anticipation of the West Santa Ana Branch Transit Corridor Light Railroad Line coming to Paramount, and the potential new development that will occur around the proposed station at Paramount and Rosecrans Boulevards. We'll also continue to work with private property owners and commercial real estate brokers on other development opportunities around the community. But one somewhat unusual economic development event we're hoping to bring to Paramount is an open streets event that's similar to a sick la vie, where streets are closed to traffic for part of the day to allow for open bike and pedestrian use. This would be a very fun community event, and would also allow for local vendors and restaurants to promote their products and their foods, et cetera. We're also applying for a grant to have this event, and it may be in conjunction with the city of Bellflower. The grant application was submitted about a couple weeks ago, and we'll report back to you as soon as we hear on the status of that. And now, that concludes the report on the Community Development Department. I'll pause here if you have any questions.
I do. Madam Mayor, I just want to know, what is the scheduled time for the last two restaurants to open at the Clearwater Crossing?
Yeah, the last word I received from Steve Boss and Royal Seco Developments is they hope to open by the end of July, and we've also talked about a possible ribbon-cutting event with the Chamber, and after the restaurants are open for time and get up to speed, possibly sometime in August for a grand opening.
A grand opening?
Or a ribbon-cutting, sorry.
Oh, okay. So they're going to open in July, and then you're maybe going to do a ribbon-cutting in August? Okay.
Thank you, Kevin.
All right, so with that, I'll go ahead and pass the baton over to Adriana Lopez from our Public Safety Department.
Thank you, Kevin. Once again, good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I will be highlighting the budget for public safety. As mentioned, public safety has the largest budget, and the largest portion going to our SWARM division. This year, we're experiencing an increase in both deputy sheriff services, which is at 2.6, and then for sergeant services will be 3.3. In addition, we're going to be seeing an increase in our liability trust fund, also known as our liability insurance, and that's going to be increasing from 10% to 10.5. Like we do every year, we looked at our budget and very carefully with the focus that would create the least impact to the services we provide. After carefully looking at our budget, we are proposing to realign the traffic enforcement program. You may recall that in the summer of 2016, the motorcycle deputy assigned to Paramount was injured while working a DUI checkpoint in the city of Bellflower. During his absence, the position was filled with dedicated traffic enforcement overtime. The deputies, the deputy that was injured was not able to return to his assignment in Paramount, so the city continued to dedicate overtime hours to address traffic concerns. By doing this, this provided greater flexibility. It also allowed us to be very specific with our target enforcement or traffic enforcement. And by reducing or actually increasing the hours and not having a dedicated traffic car, we will see a reduction in cost. In addition, Lieutenant Beragon and Sergeant Alejo can also schedule special operations, traffic operations, which would consist of a team of deputies, usually about four, and also a sergeant. And this would be scheduled to address specific traffic enforcement issues. Since we started the realignment of the traffic program in 2016, we have seen an increase in traffic enforcement and also a very effective method of enforcement. As you can see here, we see the numbers for 2016, 2017, and the numbers for 2018 are just from January to May. So we anticipate that those numbers will go up. The numbers that you see before you also include special operations. In public safety, as you can see, we have additional contracts with the probation officer, the deputy district attorney, and we also continue to fund half the cost of one body for this school resource deputy. We also continue to contract services through, or for Dave Batton, and he's our detective bureau specialist. In our non-SWARM division, we saw an increase in our crossing guard services. As you could see, there was an increase in the hourly rate from $17.67 to $19.02 per hour. Public safety will continue to provide services, animal control services, and we will also continue to have a dedicated ZIAK officer assigned to the city of Paramount. In addition, we continue to provide services to our residents through our community service officers, also our code enforcement officers, and we continue to strengthen our relationship with our residents through our Neighborhood Watch program. And we also introduced a home rebate program this year, and we will continue to fund that. This concludes my presentations. May I answer any questions before I hand it off to Sarah Hope?
No, thank you. Thank you, Adriana.
I have one question, please. Of all the traffic citations that you give out in the city, what does the city realize off of each, of a, say, a speeding ticket? It's $300 and some dollars. What does the city get for it?
Karina, do you happen to know that number? If not, we can always report back to you with that.
Yeah, it's a very small percentage because the funds run through us, through the courts, so the county get a share, different agencies get a share before we get it. So do you have a particular amount, Adriana, do you know?
No, I don't, because sometimes even when there's a citation that's issued, and correct me if I'm wrong, sir, the person who goes to court could ask for a payment plan or reduce in citations, so that's very hard to follow.
But what we could do for you, Councilmember Hoffmeyer, is look into that and then come back, report back with just an average amount.
Because I know a lot of people just say, you know, come through Paramount, speed trap, you have all these costs, but you know what? If we don't get any money for it, they can't say we're doing it for our own personal gain.
Sure, sure. Well, there's also...
We're just doing it for public safety.
Oh, absolutely. There's a community outcry.
That's our main goal anyways, public safety, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're absolutely right.
Okay, Sarah.
Thank you. I'd like to highlight the Public Works portion of the budget this evening. On the operations side, our budget maintains the current level of both in-house and contract services for the upcoming fiscal year. There have been some minor increases in contract costs that are CPI increases of 3.6% or less, which are reflected in the budget for our fleet maintenance, our landscape maintenance, and our street sweeping contracts. On the tree trimming side, as you may recall, the last few years, we've discussed that the wage determination for tree trimmers was changed by the State Labor Relations Board. There was a significant increase in their labor rate, and as a result, contractors have had to pass these costs on to their clients. The increase affects all tree contractors statewide, so it's not unique to our vendor, West Coast Arborist. The increase, which was 30% overall, was negotiated to be spread over three years, and included in this year's budget is that last 10% of the increase. In our engineering services budget, we continue to fund, to include funding for technical assistance for environmental issues and stormwater compliance. In our roads department budget, you'll see the inclusion of a sidewalk concrete service repair contract. This year, we proposed to move from our traditional CIP project to a service contract. Previously, with our CIP program, we would spend the year compiling a list of repairs, and then we would get them repaired in one project at one time, and then repeat the process again a year later. However, with this sidewalk repair contract, we'd be able to secure a contractor through an award of bid process, and then would then have that contractor be on call for the entire year, and they'd be able to respond to sidewalk repairs as they come up. So this still allows us to secure a competitive price, but have faster response times to these larger sidewalk repairs. Several surrounding cities have been switching to this type of service for repairs, and we feel that it would be beneficial for Paramount as well. The department has a few capital outlay items that we're proposing in this year's budget. As part of the city's stormwater management obligations, we want to continue the purchase of catch basin inserts to help keep trash out of the storm drain system, and we are proposing to continue to replace very... proposing to continue to replace various aging vehicles in our fleet, including a few work trucks as well as a tractor. In our water operations budget, we've included some maintenance for the engine and replacement of chemical pumps, all at well 14, as well as some necessary upgrades to our SCADA system, which allows our water department staff to control water well operations from a central location. And quickly, I'll pause here if you have any questions about the public works side of the budget, operations side.
I have a quick question, Madam Mayor. Are the truck replacements eco-friendly in any way?
Unfortunately, the trucks, no, we're unable to. Previously, we were able to do a Silverado hybrid, and we're unable to find one this year. And a lot of our work trucks that we're replacing, our specialty, include some work bodies that don't, that aren't available on a regular vehicle, which would be available in a hybrid.
That's what I was going to ask. Is that because they don't, they're not available yet?
Yes. Yeah. Well, we are always looking for that every year. We try to include those as often as we can, but unfortunately, this year, we couldn't find them.
Okay. Thank you. You got a question?
No.
All right. We'll move on to the capital improvement projects. A repeat here of the pie chart showing you that we have, are projecting just over $13 million for projects in the coming year, including some carryover projects. Tonight, I'll highlight all the new projects for FY19, including our traditional projects, our needed maintenance projects, and including some design efforts that give us shovel-ready projects that are aimed at better positioning the city for outside funding sources. In the streets category, we have a number of projects this fiscal year amounting to almost $6 million. Starting with our annual arterial street project, if you've already heard from me earlier tonight, the FY18 arterial project was delayed and will be a carryover project to FY19. That project includes resurfacing Paramount Boulevard from Somerset to Rosecrans indicated by the yellow line. After that project is completed, we'll move forward with the FY19 project, continuing the resurfacing work on Paramount from Rosecrans to the north city limit indicated by the blue line. For our annual neighborhood or local street improvement project, we have a similar situation. As discussed earlier tonight, FY18's project was delayed and will be completed this upcoming fiscal year. You've seen this map here already tonight, but we'll be overlaying some streets in the west and north areas of town indicated by the yellow lines. And then FY19 will continue this work into some of the sand street areas, as well as portions of Motts, Marcel, and Ann Smith indicated by all the blue lines here. Earlier this year, the city was awarded an active transportation program grant from Caltrans for the second phase of the West Santa Ana Branch Bike Trail Project. Phase two will extend the existing portion of our bike trail shown in yellow from Somerset to Paramount, to the Paramount-Rosecrans intersection shown in blue. Costs for this fiscal year include design only. Construction of the project is tentatively planned for FY20. We'll be continuing to replace the dead turf on our city medians where we are unable to irrigate with potable water with drought tolerant landscape. This year, we'll be focusing on completing Alondra Boulevard. This fiscal year, we'd like to introduce some additional directional signage around town to guide our residents and visitors to important locations. Signage will be similar to the photo on the left here from a different city, but we utilize our design and color scheme from the existing sign designs. We're entering year three of replacement of our older monument signs with the new designs. This year, we plan to install two on Alondra Boulevard. And for one last sign project, we'll be installing a few more of these parkway entry signs on Orange Avenue, similar to those that were recently installed on Downey. In the parks and landscape category, we're proposing approximately $279,000 of improvements. First, we're proposing to look for design services to put together some concepts for a few park facilities, including Paramount Park Community Center, Progress Park, and Spani Park. These designs would then be utilized to go after grant funding for the construction portion of the projects. We found that many grant programs are requiring a conceptual design to show that the applicant is ready to move forward with the project. A few years, a few years ago, you may remember that we put out a bid for the construction of basketball courts at All American Park where the old fountains are currently located. At the time, the costs from contractors were too high, and we were unable to move forward. This year, we looked at it from a different angle, and through the use of our in-house staff for a majority of the project, we're going to be able to complete it on our own. This will include removal of these fountains, which have not been used in over 25 years, and then installation of two semicircle half courts in their place. We're also proposing to renovate the Paramount Gym bathrooms in an effort to modernize the facility, as well to create some more functional use. We'll be purchasing some miscellaneous equipment for Paramount Pool. As David stated earlier, we're starting to replace our existing picnic tables at our parks with more sturdy concrete products. We'll use this project to replace the circular tables on Paramount Pool Deck, same as the ones at Orange Splash Zone, and also purchase new pool covers and lane lines. We have a few miscellaneous improvements totaling $161,000. These include our routine items, such as our neighborhood enhancement program and our utility box murals. As we've been doing over the past few years, we've been replacing aging air conditioning units at our facility. This year, we are proposing new units at the community center building. And finally, for our water improvements, we'll be completing our routine projects, our installation of new services and hydrants and our valve replacements. But our most exciting and largest project that we're undertaking this year is the final phase of our Well 16 project. This includes the construction of pumping and water treatment equipment needed to bring Well 16 online and into our water system. We're very excited about this one. And before I hand it over to Karina, I will pause and see if there are any questions about any of these projects.
I don't have a question, Madam Mayor, but I have to make a comment. Sarah, this was your first presentation, and I really enjoyed it. I felt like I was on a Disneyland ride.
Oh, yes.
I have that tone. When we get into the ride, we'll be taking you on the boat.
It was very good.
It was just there, I thought, oh, boy, I'm in Disneyland.
She used to work at Disneyland. Oh, I'm kidding. I'm kidding.
I just came back from a Disney vacation, so maybe that's what did it.
Thank you, Sarah.
I have one more question. Diane, please. On the sidewalks, are we still grinding? Is the JPI still involved in that?
JPI is not. We're doing it on our own, or are they?
No, correct. We're not doing the concrete cutting anymore because they came through and they did so much that they did. We are doing grinding in-house if we see any lifts, and then remove and replace will be handled with the contracts that we put before you tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Hanson?
No, no, I said that was the same thing.
Any other? Okay, so what we are going to do, we are going to have to take each item.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, we are going to give back to Karina to wrap up the presentation. Sorry about that.
That's all right. We'll be real quick. So back to the general fund. This is a fund where the council has the most discretion in spending. When we talk about having a surplus or deficit, we are referring to general fund. So for this fund, because of a potential recall election or elections, we are forecasting a deficit of about $300,000. Now, if there is no election in this upcoming year, we could very well have a surplus as always. This, we call election, we're just putting a placeholder for now. So if we include a deficit or surplus in the current year, this is a chart to show you. For current year, we are projecting a $97,000 surplus, and for next year, it's a $300,000 deficit. Back in 2010, I want to draw to your attention, we made a one-time payment to California Joint Power Insurance Authority back then. They changed the formula, and to take advantage of the discount, we actually made $881,000 payment to them. And there's also a little bit over $100,000 deficit related to recession, therefore, you see a $1 million deficit there. Lastly, when we include the deficit into our fund balance, at June 30, you'll see that our general fund will still have $12.5 million, and restricted fund about $5.6 million, and water fund still have $3.3 million. And for successor agency, it will continue to wind down the business of the former redevelopment agency, fulfilling the responsibility of the bond issues and other third-party contracts and agreements. The budget reflects the enforceable obligations on our ROPS, and the tax increment we expect to receive to be able to pay all those obligations. Effective July, the county will take over our oversight board's function. However, we are still responsible for the managing of the funds and the submission of ROPS to the state. And for the housing authority, the budget is a holdover, this fund is a holdover from the former redevelopment agency, low and moderate housing fund. We have very limited way to use this fund. In FY19, we are budgeting $500,000, a potential project, a housing project. That concludes our presentation for tonight. As John mentioned, there are a number of resolutions and some agreements for your approval. So staff is recommending you approve 18017 for the budget, 18018 for the gang limit, 18019 for the statement of investment policy, and a few annual agreements. And we all have you to answer any questions.
Thank you, Karina. Okay, we'll start with resolution, A, Resolution Number 18017.
Move it.
Second.
A roll call, please.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Letter B, Resolution Number 18018.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Letter C, Resolution Number 18019.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Letter D, Approval?
I move the public safety service agreements for fiscal 2018, 19.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. This is an excellent, excellent budget, and I want to thank staff for retaining the many traditional services, programs, and events our residents and businesses have come to expect and appreciate. Each of our staff members, all the employees, I know you have worked diligently on this budget, and I thank you and I commend you, and the City of Paramount is very blessed and fortunate to have you working for our city. So God bless you, and thank you for the hard work. Okay, let's move on to, are there any comments or committee reports from council members?
I have some, Madam Mayor, if I may. I want to start with that I attended the Harvest Festival, and I sincerely enjoyed the music and the games and the community booths, but most of all, the student recognition. Nothing makes me happier than to see the children in our community going on to college and growing in such exponential ways. Also, I wanted to comment on a couple of the joint programs that we have with the school district. As many of you know, I have a new granddaughter living with me, and so she participated in the SNAP program, and I reported at our school-city ad hoc meeting that I was extremely impressed with city staff there, David. I have to share with you that there was, at the SNAP program, the kids don't have to ask permission to leave the program. When it's over, they can go. It's not one where parents have to pick them up. So one of the younger children, I think he was probably around eight or nine, was leaving the grounds, and the city staff person stopped him, and he said, hey, 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 wait, you know, isn't your mom or your dad coming to pick you up? And he goes, no, I just live down the block. And the staff person goes, well, that's okay, stay here. Here, I have my cell phone. What's your mom's number? Let me call your mom. And he goes, no, no, I just live down the street. He goes, well, I could take you then. Why don't you just stay here? So the fact that he went to that, you know, extra degree to make sure that this child was safe, when they could come and go and say, please, it's part of the program, I was just so proud of that, and made me feel so good that my granddaughter there was there and safe. And then today was her first day of our city's summer camp program, which we enrolled her in, and just as you said, you cannot find anything at that price with, you know, those kinds of activities for children. And so I watched as the leaders got them all organized, and I think there were probably about 150 kids there, it looked like to me, in the different groups, and that was amazing to watch. But the other thing is the SNAP program is a partnership with our school district, echoing what Dr. Perez said. And so with the summer camp program, it was her second day. The first day, she was a little nervous, so she asked me to stay. So when we got ready to go to breakfast, I said, so, asked staff, so where do we go to breakfast? They go, we just walked, you know, right around the corner here, and we go into the school's cafeteria, which was all set up for them. So just another amazing partnership where they can have breakfast and lunch, I understand, and in a real facility, a cafeteria all set up with them, which wouldn't exist without those amazing partnerships that we have with our school district. So just really proud of that. And then in closing, I want to report that I attended the Annual Contract Cities Conference in Indian Wells, and I sincerely enjoyed the technology seminar that we attended, and especially the one that was about the innovations that are going to be coming to all of us through transportation. I hope we don't have to wait long for those cars to drive themselves. So, thank you.
Well, I too, was that Saturday night, I was at the Harvest Fiesta, and, you know, to see the community involved in this was very nice, and we had a great turnout, and from the second year, I think it's going great, David. I think great things will happen, get it bigger and bigger.
Thank you.
I too was at Indian Wells, and it was a very good seminar, and we all attended.
Very good. Councilmember Hanson?
Yes, I was also at the Heritage Festival. It was very well-run. Enjoyed the fish tacos, actually, off the truck. They were very good. Also, at the Contract Cities Association, the conference, all the sessions were, well, I attended all of them anyway. Some of them didn't have too many people at. We, as a council, were pretty much all there. I especially enjoyed the homelessness and what they're trying to accomplish on that. The Water Jeopardy session, speaking with purpose was interesting. The Tonight Show with Lou Lamont was, that was kind of a fun program, actually. He's a council member from?
Malibu.
Malibu, and I think he's a director, Hollywood director, too. So he was very, very good. And then they had an active listening seminar that they had. So they are all pretty good sessions. Also, on Friday, I attended the closing ceremony for the PJAA in that when they had the opening ceremony scheduled, it was raining that morning, so they couldn't do their whole program. And they was quiet, there were a lot of kids there, and they had all, they had three tables full of trophies, I think, that were given out to all the kids, and so they all seemed to have a good time, and they wished to thank the city for everything that we helped with the PJAA.
Thank you, Tom. I attended the Californian Contract Cities Association from May 17 through the 19th. There are a lot of very informative sessions on municipal governance. One of the sessions that stood out for me was the discussion between County Board Supervisor Janice Hahn and Catherine Barker. They discussed the challenges the county is currently facing with a number of issues of homelessness. And speaking of the homelessness, there was a very informative speaker, Mr. Lee Sibler, who discussed what it's like to be homeless and live on the street. Mr. Sibler did just that. He lived on the street with homeless people and then wrote a book about his experiences. He really gave us a different perspective on homelessness. All in all, the conference was very educational and allowed me the time to discuss and learn about ideas from the many other council members who were in attendance. And I also attended the Heritage Festival on Saturday evening, and it was just a happy, fun moment. There were so many families that came together and enjoyed each other's company. The music was great. The La Sonora de la Amita, there were so many of them dancing. We need a larger dance floor next year, David. Those ladies and gentlemen were just shaking a leg, and it was wonderful. And it was, the children loved the animals. Not many of them, you know, get to pet a cow or touch a sheep, and the children, it was just amazing. It was a very, very wonderful evening, and it just brought the community together, a beautiful family event. So, so thank you, David. I know you said you had one of your staff members take the lead, but you were the leader of the community development, and it was excellent, so.
And I'd like to say one more thing. It's amazing how the young children were around that cow and had no idea where their milk came from. Some of them probably have never seen a live cow. But it was just amazing. They were, I mean, their eyes were just glued when they seen milk coming up.
So cute.
They also had some nice cars in the car show, too.
Oh, yes, that is well.
57 Chevy, never mind.
Beautiful cars.
Never mind.
So it was very nice. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to the successor agency.
Madam Mayor, if I may comment from staff?
Oh, I'm sorry, I always forget staff. Okay, so, John.
I wish to thank all of you for the compliments on behalf of the staff that you showered upon them. They are very deserving of that. They're very hardworking staff, and I'm very proud of each and every one of them. And it is a team effort to put this budget together. As I mentioned to you, we're going on our third month. And it is a team effort to put this budget together. As I mentioned to you, we're going on our third month, but it mostly is on the finance department, Karina and Clyde and their team. It does take a lot of work to go, and a lot of late hours, weekends, everything like that, that you hear people say. So with that, though, I'd also like to compliment the council for the job that you've done over the years of allowing staff to produce this budget and to come up with a very healthy reserve account. I mean, it's, I've seen other cities' reserve accounts, and that's basically our savings account, our rainy day fund. And to have a healthy reserve account like what we have here in Paramount is a testament to the longevity of you as well as your prudence, your fiscally-minded ability to stay within bounds. And so with that, it does help us produce that. It's a $12 million surplus. So not a lot of cities our size can say that. So kudos to everybody that's involved in the production of the budget, but also in the approval of the budget as well, so.
Thank you, John.
Okay, we'll move on to the successor agency. May I have roll call of members, please?
Councilmember Guian? Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Here.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Here.
Mayor Martinez?
Here. Item one.
Want to excuse Lori from this? Make much, we excuse Lori.
Excuse. Thank you. Item one, Resolution Number 18001.
Have approval?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
Moving on to the Paramount Housing Authority, roll call commissioners, please.
Commissioner Guian? Commissioner Lemmons?
Here.
Commissioner Martinez?
Here.
Vice Chair Hanson?
Here.
Chair Hoffmeyer?
Yes. Other comments in new business, approval of the budget? Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lemmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hanson?
Yes.
Chair Hoffmeyer?
Yes. Would you join this meeting then?